It's six o'clock, we'll call the committee of the whole meeting in order. The court would please call a roll.
Mariska?
Here.
Jones? March?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Ham? Bowden?
Here.
Right, approval of the November 25th, 2019 committee of the whole meeting minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, a motion to accept the ask presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Parker or say it by trustee Mariska?
Parker?
Yes.
Mariska?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Jess?
All right, public comment? Don't see any public comment at the moment, so we'll go ahead and go ahead and do it. Guys, come on up.
All right. Do you got a little clicker later? Well.
I don't.
You don't?
I don't have a clicker, but I can do it for you.
Oh, okay, well, did you want me to come out there and do it, or just?
No, I think you can do whatever you want to do, that's fine. Yeah, you can come up, or you can stay there.
Let's do this.
I don't care.
Really, we kind of made a little discovery. We had low pressure calls at both of these houses. Primarily, it was 425 is where we started getting the low pressure. We went there and we pulled the meter out, which is typically what we're going to do to find out whether or not we've got good pressure going into the home. So when we pulled it out, it was just a drip. So we started backtracking, went to the curb box, dug up at the curb box, tried to figure out if it was a shut-off issue, a valve issue, or something there, and it didn't appear to be. There was a little bit of blockage, a little bit of calcium, a little bit of line buildup, but it wasn't anything that was really causing an issue. So we went back to the corp stop, and because these two are right across each other from each other, one's a short service, one's a long service, so it kind of gave us a good idea, good chance to take a look at a couple of things. I don't know if you guys can really see this or not very well, but that is what 425 East Main stop looked like.
It's totally clogged?
It is almost completely clogged, yeah. Wow, it's definitely a lot better. So you can see what's happening, and now what's really going on is this basically filtering through there, but there's not hardly any water going through that at all. So because the other one was right next to it, this is the one that was at 428, which is right across the street. So you can see, this one just happens to have a tiny little hole that's been bored through enough in order to allow them to have just a little bit more pressure, but it certainly wasn't very much pressure at all. Very, very little, very low pressure. I don't know if everybody here is aware or not, but we've been getting a lot of low pressure calls for Piaton, and I think it's historical. And we're really kind of believing that this is the primary issue behind a lot of things. Now, there's a lot of reasons for this. System maintenance, old pipes, old stuff, high line, the water that's coming through here. So there's a lot of reasons why you would have those kind of blockages. So what we're going to do is, we're going to try to, this is, this machine is really is a flowing machine, for lack of a better term. When service lines freeze up, what they do is they cut the pipe and they stick this little nozzle back through there, and they shove that back up through the inside of the pipe, and it jets the water out and it follows everything. What we're going to try to do is, we're going to try to make one of these. We've got a pressure washer and a machine. This is the nozzle that we're going to try to use. We've ordered one of those nozzles, it's supposed to be coming in. And this really kind of shows the way they jet a sanitary sewer service, but we're going to try to do the same thing with actually the service at the curb box, jetting back towards the main, and see if we can blow some of that stuff out. So what we're going to do is, you can see the curb boxes here on the long service, here on the short service. We're going to wind up digging up here, and we're going to jet back into the main, because that blockage is actually in the corp. Now, the issue that we have with it being in the corp is that a lot of the mains are actually under the roads in Piaton, and we don't want to dig them up too. So we're going to try digging in at the curb boxes and see if we can get in there and get some of those jetted out. Now, as soon as we get the stuff, we're going to try it on these, right next door to these, because we think that that's probably going to be relatively the same situation. So we're going to wind up digging those up, and we're going to jet those out and see whether or not we can get this to work. Now, we changed the corpse on both of these, and what's happening is, because they've got great water pressure, now a lot of people are going, hey, Aqua could come in, and they fixed our water pressure, so they can fix your water pressure too. So what that kind of leads us to is a lot of different questions that are going to come up with what we're doing. First of all, the number of low pressure services, we really don't know what they are, because we're still getting calls for low pressure. I don't know if you're still getting any calls or not.
I haven't lately, no, but.
Well, I'm sure they're on social media, and I do know that we're starting to record all these and where they're at. So we're kind of afraid that they're going to be relatively high. One good thing about it is that most of the services tend to be right across from each other, so when we're there, our intent is to try to dig on both sides and get both of those and work our way along, if we can do that. But we got to try and find out whether or not it works. It's unlikely that the lowest pressure or the most affected customers, it is likely, sorry, not unlikely. So if you guys care about it, who are the priority people that we need to take care of? Is it just the low pressure? There's always some political pressure on businesses, things like that, that might need it. So as we start getting these calls, I guess we're going to kind of want to help prioritizing on some of those, on which ones might be the best. Now, we can go there, we can take pressure readings, and we can look, and we can put a numerical number to it, but that's not always the best route to go. So some of the consequences, we're working on budgets right now. This is not going to be cheap, it's going to be messy, it's going to be a pain, we're going to disrupt. The curb boxes are typically at the property line, there's usually sidewalks around, between sidewalks are going to be dug up, yards are going to be dug up. There's going to be restoration costs, the jetting of the time, all involved. So all of that's going to start getting expensive, and it's going to get frustrating. I'm hoping that we can keep up with everything, but right now, we're still developing our budgets and trying to figure out where we're going to go this year. So if this works, we at least have a plan and tech, but I think after that, we're going to probably wind up having to prioritize things a little bit differently. We've been very careful on how we do it. We'd love to be able to just come in and do them all, but that's just not realistic, I just don't think that we're going to be able to do that. The other thing is, I wanted to bring up too, is this kind of came up again today. Just because somebody has low pressure doesn't necessarily mean this is what their issue is. Corning, I think there's, somebody's building a church or rebuilding a church?
No, it's across the street from the church.
Okay.
It's a business and two apartments.
Okay, well, what had happened was, they've got very low pressure there too, which is a completely different situation. Their issue is with the mains themselves, because when we do a fire flow test, we check out of the hydrants, and the hydrants just don't have very good pressure in it. So even though we got that call of their question of whether or not this is the situation, can we just take care of them? That's not necessarily the case, it's a completely different situation. And we think over time, some of that will remedy itself too. What had happened was, when we took over Grand Park, we kind of ran into some of these same issues. Then over time, the change of the water, the chemistry in the water, and everything else, it helped clean some of those mains out, which is kind of what we're looking for, and kind of expecting here, and I think it would be the same thing. So some of it's going to clear up, and I can tell you, all of it's not going to clear up. You know, again, due to our obligations, I don't know what we're going to have available, I don't know how many of these that we're going to be able to do. The number of services that we're going to be able to schedule is going to depend on how many new customers we have, what kind of projects we've got going. There's a hundred different things that go into it. And then I guess the last thing is, kind of as I mentioned before, support from you guys trying to figure out. You're going to hear it on social media, my pressure's bad, Aqua won't come and fix my thing. So we're going to kind of look to you guys for advice on which way, the best way to go, and who we should, as far as, I hate to say it this way, but tend to first, because there are different priorities. And just gauging somebody and putting a numerical value to it just doesn't do it.
Like, just for an example of how to maybe prioritize, how we would prioritize something is, I had talked to Brian today, if we would have thought that going in and jetting that line would have helped that Corning house where the pressure was low, they're requiring, because they're under construction, if they would have, they require sprinklers in their construction, and if we're not able to put sprinklers in there because the pressure's so low, and if they could have went in and jetted that line out, increased their pressure, then the sprinklers would have worked, and since the pressure's so low, we have to now come up with another solution to, you know, meet codes for fire protection. So that would have been one, we would have said, this, you know, rates a higher priority for you to come out and take a look at this. That's just an example.
Yeah, and then we're certainly not saying, you guys tell us who you want to get done with. Because we'll be able to make certain decisions ourselves. But there will be situations that come up when we're going to go, you know, well, we've got three or four people that are all in the same need. Is there a priority that the village would kind of prefer us taking that approach?
Because I know we're going to do the main on Corning this upcoming year, is that going to?
Well, that will alleviate the problem that they're having with the Grand Park.
Right.
Well, except that we can't just put in a sprinkler system and say, okay, you can wait to see that works with the main, but.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying that that replaces that entire main.
It'll help the pressure for people.
Yeah, and Angela had mentioned before too, that when we put that main in next year, it's a great plan. Just don't put on your calendar when we're going to start putting the main, just to make sure, because there's a lot of moving pieces to that.
Right, and I know we're trying to coordinate with our road project, so that's the big thing.
Right, yeah.
This solidification in the pipes, is it something that has built up over a long period of time? I mean, it's nothing that built up for something that Aqua was doing?
Oh, no, this is just a long period of the condition of the water. That it's your well system, it's just the way that it really is. This isn't, I don't even know that this is really other than what they call unidirectional flushing or directional flushing, that you would ever control all of that. Most places don't, certainly, I'm sure the village did directional flush, which is starting basically at your towers and working in a methodical way to push all of the water out. And you'd have to do that two or three times a year to ever avoid something like this. But you just don't have the resources to do that, you don't have the cost of the water to do. I mean, there's just a million reasons why you wouldn't do something like that. Even when we flush now, we're moving towards a directional flushing, but we kind of do the same thing, but we only do it once a year. We start at the towers and we start pushing our way out and making sure that we're putting all fresh water back out into the system. That's the only way that you're ever going to get rid of this. So this isn't a reflection on what has been done over the years, even though, could it have been done better? Well, those are always decisions that are made by economics and a lot of different resources that are necessary to get stuff like this done. It's really most indicative of the water quality is really what it is.
And I failed at the beginning of this to have you introduce yourself and introduce Angela, because that's okay, because we're also recording the meeting, so it'll be out there, so if you want to maybe make those introductions.
I'm Ryan O'Keefe, I'm the field supervisor for Aqua. My responsibilities are basically, once they get water into a pipe, that I'm responsible to make sure it gets where it goes with high quality, and we take care of any of the repairs and any of the customer issues that come up. So that's really directly what my duties are. Angela is the new area manager, and I don't know if Angela's Sarafini. She's the new area manager, and if you want to kind of describe what your duties are, please feel free.
So I oversee, I was kind of explaining earlier, I oversee Kinkke Key in Will County. So waste water and water, the two things, so.
So on those two houses, what did you guys end up doing to fix that?
We wanted to dig into the main and pull it out the corp and replace in the corp. You know, and that's another thing that's going to wind up coming to an issue at some point, and it didn't in this particular case, because the pressure got so good, so I don't think anybody cared. But even though we replaced from the main to the curb stop, anything from the curb stop to the house is still the customer's responsibility. I would imagine those lines probably don't look a whole lot different than what you're seeing at that corp stop. So that's kind of what I'm afraid of. Even though we go in and we do this and we can do a small portion of it, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to correct the problem for the customers, because they may still have old galvanized lines. I think we're replacing some of the lead lines now, so. So I think some of those issues, even though we do certain things, they may not go away completely for the customer. But again, opening up that corp and that line from us is going to pressurize their line, and it might blow some stuff out of there. One of the things we did find is there's a filter in a lot of the homes that's right before the meter, while you've got to keep that filter clean. So if you have one, take it out every now and then, clean it, bang it out, kind of like the screen on your faucet filter. I don't know if anybody ever does that or not, but it's always a good idea to do that too. Same thing with the screens inside your filter that goes into your system. Clean those out or not, so. If we can break this up, the water pressure can blow some of that stuff off, they'll just have to clean their screens a little bit more.
Any questions from any of the board members?
I know this isn't your area, but the main installation and each road, is that going as planned, you know?
Yeah, it's kind of long. There's always some snags when you go into there. There's an issue right now with the creek crossing that we're kind of working through, but I think everything is progressing pretty much as we expected it. But yeah, there's always little hiccups as you go along. You know, we tease engineers all the time into eternal optimists, because I've never seen anything get done on time and for the right cause, but. Just one of those things, just crossing soils were bad there, so they're just running across some issues, but nothing insurmountable, especially.
You were talking about the pipes that go into the residence themselves, and you didn't know if the pipes would be as plugged up as the service going to them. Do you guys ever use like cameras, fish cameras to the pipes to see how?
No, they really, they do it in sewer all the time, but we're really going in water. We don't have a camera to do that. I don't know that there's really any reason to do that, for the most part, unless you're looking for a break or something like that. But once you get down to the size, we don't really do it.
I was going to say, the size of those water service lines is quite a bit smaller than the sewer lines.
Yeah, and once you start cutting them open and you look at them and you see what's inside them, it'd be really hard to get a camera, something that small, into one of those pipes to even look and see what it looks like. And even if you did, really all you have to do is tell you whether or not you got to replace it or not, it's nothing you can really do about it. I don't think jetting is going to iron, take out a lot of that stuff either.
Since these are minerals, is there a dissolving that's been proven, or you have to physically remove them?
Yeah, I mean, if you change the phosphate levels and things in the water, there's some water chemistry things that you can do to help remove those. But even the condition of the water that we have right now is certainly better than the water as far as the total dissolved solids that are actually in the water. That'll help clear some of this stuff away, so, even just putting better water in the system.
Will we do the switch over?
Will we do the switch?
Correct.
You know, we've got a few of those comments too. You know, our pressure's been horrible ever since Aqua got here and took over the system. Well, just to be clear, you guys understand, we have done absolutely nothing to the system with it.
Thank you very much.
Sign the sheet over there so I spell your names right.
Okay.
All right, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Okay, do you have some cards, please?
Yep, okay, thanks, thanks for you.
Yeah.
All right, so, item five, draft of updated personnel manual.
Okay, we've been working on this in committee for some time, but I wanted to just bring you our, what I call a final draft. And I can just go over it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. So this has been to, like I said, Administrative Oversight Committee, several meetings for us to review. It's been to all the staff to review, and it's been to the police union, and it's been to the public works union, as required by the contracts. So I've gotten feedback from, I've not gotten feedback from the police union, but I've gotten feedback from the public works union, and I've gotten feedback from some of the staff that are not unionized, so. And your attorney's been working on it, I've been working on it, and I think it's in a good enough working order that I wanted to bring it to you all for one more review before we bring it back and approve it, or possibly prove out with the. But I think most of you have seen, most of you have seen these changes that we've made. One of the big ones was changing the IMRF from 600 hours to 1,000 hours per calendar year. We've added in, made sure we've added in language that says that, you know, anything that's in the bargaining agreements, you know, that takes precedence over anything that's in here, that kind of language. Changed a lot of references to that village administrator has been added, where maybe it's appropriate instead of a board, you know, would be managing some of this stuff, unless it's appropriate, that it would come to you first, or something like that. We take out things that are just not appropriate, where probably before we had police agreements and public work agreements. So we take out some of that, so there's just less confusion, this is just a more clean document, is more representative of what is occurring today versus what was happening before. One thing that I don't think any of you have seen, and this is based on some review by the treasurer, and she's also our human resources coordinator, so she uses this very much as a tool to do her duties, is like on page four, where is this section, 2.4, physical and blood test, where she pointed out that no new employee has ever been required to get blood, that we've only taken urine. So I think here's where you see some discrepancy of actual practice versus policy. And I just wanted to point this out, because you do in your personnel manual and policy, you are asking for blood. We did not change, this is what you asked for, but we've not been actually doing it. So I just want to make sure you still do want to require a blood test for new hires. Because if you do, we leave it in as it's written, and in practice, we actually do.
Is that covered at all under the police and the public works? Is that, is there anything, and there are agreements?
No, there's nothing that says anything in there. But I would imagine you'd want to do that, especially for them.
Can you say, including a urine and/or a blood test? I mean, what's going, I mean, normally you just do a urine test, I don't know if anybody does a blood test.
And you also in here saying you have to, you get the employees permission.
Right.
You did take my blood, though. I'm just saying. And that has never happened to me in my life, but.
What were you testing for?
Drugs, drugs. You're testing for drugs.
Is there stuff that you?
But you're.
Maybe it's a more thorough test, like with the blood or something, to see, because I think with urine, you can fake a lot there.
Well, can you, I mean, how much is a blood test like 10 times more expensive than a urine test? Does it show, I mean, can you find out? Because I don't know, I mean, most of the time you always hear people take urine.
Right, exactly.
And that's how, you know, like when I talked to Marcy, that's the, she says, she goes, we never take blood. She goes, I just checked the urine. But I just want to make sure that we're being consistent in our policy versus our practice. And it says in here that you should be doing blood and urine, it doesn't say or. So all we do is put an or in here, and I think we cover the basis and we can decide what you want. But is that, how do we make that decision? Is that maybe then, you know, more for an employee that has a little bit more responsibilities in that area? So maybe that's a question we can look into a little bit further.
Well, you can just ask your attorney, I mean, what? Right, I mean, what's the difference, you know, why would we want a blood test other than a urine test? That's all I want to know. What is the blood test going to show that a urine test does? And is it like, you know, it's cost $500 to do a blood test and $50 to do a urine test?
I think you wasted your money on my blood test. Because you did a urine test too, so, but I just wanted to bring that one to your attention, because, yeah, I didn't know that you were not doing it all the time. So that was that one.
So Amy, anything that is stricken from this, is that from the old policy?
Correct, correct. And then, maybe if you look like on page 10, I don't think that might be, there is a paragraph in there, I don't think it's necessarily stricken, but I think the last time we went over this with Administrative Oversight Committee, it just didn't make any sense to leave it in, and so I think we are going to take it out, which I think, vacations will be taken in one week increments unless other fire arrangements are approved. No employees entitled to use any vacation time unless they have completed one year, so that paragraph. The vacations will be taken in one week increments unless otherwise arrangements are approved. We didn't think that made any sense, so we were going to strike that, with, that was a little bit of an antiquated practice, and people who we can kind of take their vacation days whenever. So we were going to strike that first sentence. And so, but yeah, I think it's actually stricken, but it is stricken?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we're recommending it. And then there was, holidays. I think it's on 10 again, there were. It's not stricken, so I lost it, but you think I want to have this thing memorized word for word, but. In here it says that holidays would be taken on the actual holiday, and that is, that doesn't happen. All holidays are not on the actual day, so that language needs to be cleaned up. You know, like sometimes, you know, Christmas might be on actually December 25th, so.
To page nine, about the.
Okay, thank you, very much. Yeah, like, you know, we, mine might be, oh, holidays are observed on the actual date of the holiday. Yeah, that, I think I, yeah, and the village hall will be closed only on the actual day of observance of the holiday unless additional time for closing is approved by the village president and the village board. So I think I definitely would recommend striking that first sentence. And And the holidays themselves was missing M O K day, so we'd add that back in. We would definitely post on M O K day.
Can we approve, do we do, when the, when the village hall is closed, do we still approve that if it's not on the holiday? Do we?
Yeah.
Like if it falls on a Sunday, we can approve that Monday off.
Correct, that's what we don't want.
Yeah.
And so, and we changed the sick leave. I think the sick leave was, is changed from, from previous. It was just, it was just not worded very well. So that was changed. We cleaned up the language based on some discussion had at the, at the Administrative Oversight Committee. We struck on page sixteen, recommend to strike all of ten point two usage of the village hall code. And then I think one of the other major change was that, was recommended to increase the public works residency requirement from ten mile radius to thirty-five mile radius, which would match the, what the police radius is, residency requirement is. But I think those cover from the major changes. Wherever it said personnel committee through all the document, we updated that to say Administrative Oversight Committee because there really isn't a personnel committee, we're saying, but the Administrative Oversight Committee functions as a personnel committee because that's part of their, their role and responsibility, if I'm aware.
Yep.
So.
So we want to check, we'll check with the attorney on the blood slash urine testing and find out what recommendation would be and make that appropriate change and then bring this back for the next meeting on the regular agenda for adoption.
And Pat wasn't gonna be here on the next meeting, so would it be okay to be, to have a next meeting after that?
That's fine.
And that way if anybody else has any questions, they can get it to me or to, and then I can.
So we'll look at the second meeting in February.
And get out a clean copy, cause I know there might be some, the numbers may be off or if there's any grammatical errors or situation. I will be cleaning all that up.
Yep.
Good job.
Thank you. I know it's taken long enough. But hopefully it'll last another twenty years.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Any other, anything else from the board on that? Thank you to the committee and to the evening. Uh, we shall move on to the food truck permit draft language.
I think that there was a question that came up because we've been getting a little bit of interest in, in town with some food trucks outside of our special events that are, that happen throughout the year. So, which I think is great, great news for, because that gives us options. But we don't want to give them maybe an unfair advantage over our established restaurants and businesses. So, you know, a lot of other communities, I would say most, have some kind of food truck regulation. So we just want to take a look at what those were, we don't have to necessarily bring it up the wheel or make it overly complicated. So just gave you a couple samples of a couple of those food truck regulations that maybe we could duplicate. And we would just have to make an amendment to our zoning code to include them. And it, it's just a, a basic application process. And that would just register them and we could, we could keep track of them and give them certain regulations we're here to. And I gave you Village of Schaumburg, I thought that was, that was a decent one. And other Village of Champagnes, keeping in mind the Village of Champagne outside of university. And so maybe, but they, so I think they probably deal with this a lot. And so that with experience, you know, comes some good, good regulations. But Schaumburg's was decent also and it was just really, really simple.
What I kind of liked about that one.
Yeah, that's what I liked about it too. So like I said, I don't think we need to make this overly complicated.
Plus any food truck is going to have to deal with the Will County with the health department there.
Right.
So I guess it would be, you do want it simple, but, so you want these people coming in on an annual basis to register, correct? And so, I mean, other than just saying, I mean, do we want a, do we want a copy of the Will County permit? Do whatever they issue food permit or whatever?
Right.
Something like that and then, like you said, just trying to keep it simple. I mean, I don't, you know, somebody's in, I don't know if this is Champagne or Carbondale, but it says that they, they want to inspect them, you know, and.
They don't have anything to do with that.
Right, no, that's, that's Will County.
And I think they're, yeah, they're, that's why, you know, Champagne is probably, you know, dealing with hundreds of them and they have, you know, maps where they can go and they are designated. I don't think we need to get it that complicated. I'm just saying they have kind of a, maybe we take pieces of, of the champagne on and incorporate it in, into the Schaumburg. I, I mean, I really like Schaumburg's, you know, they basically, you know, for a private, for, for an event, and that was one of the questions, well, what do you do for food trucks that come into the event? That's a whole separate animal. They just, when the event permit comes in for, let's just say the, what is the one?
The chamber.
Yeah.
Or the car show.
The car show or one of those, they just kind of piggyback onto that and they just, that, that event says we're gonna have food shop. That's what they do for that. This is just when it's a one-off and they're gonna, and they know they're gonna be coming in, they come in and register. And they tell us where they're gonna be and that, they have to go on private property. In, in a business district, not in a residential area. They just give us a copy of there that they can provide food. The one thing I liked about Champagne is that they, they just, they point out not to have amplified sound. No outside tables, things like that. So they, they do kind of have a few regulations that are, that are nice, that their truck has to be in good working order and it's not like a
free candy man?
Yeah. So.
Now, private property, so, so are you saying that they just can't park on the street?
Yeah.
So the one we're talking about is the Legion and it's in the street.
Right.
I mean, I don't want these trucks pulling up on the lawn or anything.
Right.
Most of places would be more like by the, like ironworkers or out by maybe Johnson's Greenhouse, something where they have like a big driveway, but we'd probably have to fit that in. It's like you said, you want driving up on the road.
I think what they're trying to do is, is.
It wants it some clean driveway.
Right, go ahead.
Well, with saying that they can only do it on private property is so that they're, like, they're not taking up a bunch of public parking spaces or they're not, you know, parking out in the park or, you know, that they do actually have permission to, and they're partnering with businesses. I mean, it could, it could get out of hand in that sense that they're kind of, I mean, we're not being inundated with it, but.
Well, I think one of the things that triggered this whole discussion was, you know, having the pizza truck, you know, at the Legion a couple of times.
Yeah.
And, you know, they're trying to generate, you know, some business, you know, for their establishment, which is great. And I've talked, I've talked to a couple of the Legion people about it. But they don't have any place else to park it. You know, if they do something like that, they don't have any place else besides the store to park it. And I think for us to say you can't park on the street in a business district, I don't think that makes any sense to me.
Would we be able to maybe make it like, okay, if you're with this business like with Legion, they can designate so many parking spaces for that? And it would just be up to them where they want the people to park.
To me, that makes sense.
I think you'd be allowed in the business district and you, I mean, I think we may be too cumbersome, nobody's gonna come.
Right.
And I think, I don't know, a restaurant, but I think that they can only be there maximum four hours at a time or whatever. Choosing for special events, food trucks not gonna come unless it's profitable for them and the people use it.
Right.
So I think to start with, let it in and give them some public, and be supportive. And then just see, I mean, I've never had a problem parking downtown.
Right.
We got plenty of parking, so. I, I don't see this as a way to make it so cumbersome that nobody wants to go.
Right.
I think we gotta make it at least welcoming and create a problem that we'll have to solve later, but right now I don't think that's.
Yeah, it's not a problem right now. I mean, hopefully we don't have food trucks parking on property they don't have permission to park on or, you know. Yeah, and if we have to come up with zones later in public areas, that's a problem that gets solved later. And that they're not parking on private property, they're not.
The whole idea was that the trucks come in a couple of times means we should know who they are and who owns it. Should something happen, I mean, if somebody gets sick or like, oh, I don't know, where did that truck go?
And do they have the okay to be there by Legion not just pulling up and seeing, ooh, that's parked?
I don't think we should overly regulate it so that nobody wants to.
Right, right. So you kind of lean in towards the Schaumburg model and I can kind of modify that. And, and what I could do as a next step is, unless you want me to bring it back to a committee, I can kind of model, model it after this and I can, what my next step would have to be is I would have to petition for a tax amendment. Application and I'll publish it and take it to P and C.
I think that's a good.
And then I'll bring it back, and then I'll bring it back to you with their recommendation.
Have you had any feedback in the chamber about this at all?
No, I haven't, I haven't, they, they are not aware.
The only thing with Schaumburg, you know, the application, it's really geared towards like an owner of property, a business wanting to have food trucks come. Whereas, you know, we may want to have just, you know, a food truck wants to go and, you know, serve a meal or whatever, not really necessarily associated with a business. I mean, I don't have a problem with that if they want to park downtown. Go to the park, I, I mean, I don't know.
Does it need like a special area that they could go and only so many can go there at a certain time?
Zone, you know, just keep it a residential zone, but, so not necessarily make it a requirement that.
Okay.
So they just to be sponsored by something. Right, but we just want to know who these trucks are, you know, that may come into the village, you know what I'm saying?
Okay.
And, and I would say nine times out of ten, they're gonna be affiliated with somebody or something. We're not just gonna drive into town and say we want to park our truck here.
Yeah.
You know, and there's gonna be some kind of an event or some kind of a sponsorship tied to it.
Yeah. But I guess I, the application just seems overly, you know, cause it, it wants you to list the owner of the property and all that kind of stuff. I mean, in my mind, the annual, you know, they should just be able to come in and register just so we know who they are and then.
So you don't want to know where they're gonna be for the four hours?
Well, on an annual base, I mean, how are we gonna know? I mean, no, I don't really care. I don't know.
Okay, well, only because like maybe if there was like a soccer tournament or baseball tournament or something and they wanted to park over by our junior high, would they be able to park on the street or would they be able, you know, be up to school if they wanted them to park in the parking lot area for people to be able to go? I don't know, how, word that.
I mean, I, you know, if you put an hourly limit on it, I mean, I, people are, I don't think they're gonna, I mean, you can say like can't be more than two consecutive days or something like that, I don't know. You just don't want to leave it there for a week. But, I don't know, like I said.
Or it has to be a date or something.
We don't really have a problem and let's just make it simple. If something, if it does become a problem, you can always go back and change it.
So basically just give, let them have an annual permit with certain time and, and date limitations, but don't give them, don't give them restrictions on zoning or tie them to that they have to be affiliated with a.
Right.
Either an event or.
Permission to park, you know, cause they don't want to say parking right in front of like game on. Or even saying just so at least the company.
Confusing.
Right.
So some kind of, some kind of.
Some kind of permission from whatever building, cause I can see like the ironworkers on fifty saying, heck yeah, come here. So guys don't have to leave the property and they can get lunch or whatever.
Okay.
Just permission to park it, cause what if you, what if they parked right out here and we were like, uh, we didn't give you permission to park right here? But then they said, well, according to this, they'll park anywhere.
Including one of our restaurants.
Right. I don't, I don't need anybody come yelling at me, what are you doing, what are you doing, those? How about liability insurance requirements, just in case they like run over a, a fire hydrant or something? I think we, we require that from a lot of others.
I think that only makes sense.
That would be good to kind of cover our bases there.
See, we're like any other. Any other of these good little tips?
I think the amplified sound, I think is a good thing to, to build in there.
Yeah.
Unless they apply for an amplifier.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, I can, I can like kind of write that into their, to the guidelines or something that they have that option that they get a separate permit.
I like the one, they, they did say it shouldn't, you don't want it running, like the engine running.
Hello?
Hi.
Okay. All right. General discussion.
We talked about an old subdivision, a county subdivision, did he think that's all bad? We were gonna, this will resolve that thing?
Right, we're gonna go revert it back to, dissolve especially this and revert back to the original zoning and it's on my to do this.
Okay, okay, not brushing, I just ran across some old notes.
Yeah. We want to track down the owners. And so we've been, I've been noodling with the attorneys on notice and stuff like that, so it's on there.
I'm sure it's complicated, I just, I'll be doing this stuff.
Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the committee of the hall.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Parker.
Bowden?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
May hold adjourned.